Okay, we're on, SAP is on, everybody's on? I'll call the meeting to order. The first order of business is to open the public hearing on the zoning bylaw updates. The planning commission is proposing to update these. And just for, for opening, I'll read the 10 that are on the, on the agenda for the, for the hearing. Number one, habitat areas, section 3.2.4. Number two, renewable energy production, section 4.11. Number three, renewable energy systems, section 4.20. Number four, definitions, section 4.20.1. Number five, small-scale renewable energy systems, section 4.20.2. Number six, large-scale renewable energy systems, section 4.20.3. Number seven, general standards, section 4.20.4. Number eight, variances for renewable energy structures, section 6.10.2. Number nine, definitions including A, building height, B, structure height, C, structure, D, building, E, minor structures. And number 10, compliance with state and federal law. I will turn the meeting over to the town manager, Brandon Gullnick, who then may direct it to Chris Widdon or to handle the, the public hearing on the zoning bylaw updates. With that, Brandon, go ahead.
Yeah, so on September 14th of 2020, the planning commission posted a notice of public hearing to hear these zoning bylaw updates on October 26th at 7:00 PM in accordance with the provisions of 24 VSA 4441D and 4444. To hear public comments on the adoption of these bylaws. There were no public comments at the public hearing, nor submitted in writing prior to the public hearing. The land use administrator submitted a memorandum to my office on October 27th of 2020, requesting to move the above-mentioned zoning bylaw updates to the select board according to 24 VSA 4442. According to 24 VSA 4442A, the select board shall warn a public hearing not less than 15 nor more than 120 days after a proposed bylaw amendment or repeal is submitted to the legislative body of a municipality under section 4441 of this title. The select board on February 16th warned this public hearing that we're in right now for this time at 6:30 PM. So I will pass this on over to the land use administrator, Chris Widdon. I do just want to mention a couple of things. Under 24 VSA 4442B, the legislative body may make minor changes to the proposed bylaw amendment or repeal, but shall not do so less than 14 days prior to the final public hearing. So this could be one public hearing or a series of public hearings, depending on what the select board chooses. If this, if the legislative body at any time makes substantial changes in the concept meeting or extent of the proposed bylaw update, it shall warn a new public hearing or hearings under subsection A of this section. After the end of the public hearing tonight, the select board can close the hearing and vote to accept the bylaw updates. If the select board chooses to do so, the bylaw updates shall be effective 21 days after adoption. So I'll pass it over to you.
Can I have that just a minute? So does everybody clear on that, board members? I know you're new to this, Kelly, and I, you know, okay. So what that means is we've got a few choices for tonight. And, and one of them will be to continue the hearing to a, to a date certain. So if we, if we want to make a few changes here or you see a few words that you don't like, I would suggest that we continue the hearing until maybe the next meeting or something. We could then, or if that's not the case, we, we close the hearing after tonight. And then we make a motion to adopt these proposed changes as written. And then like Brandon said, it'll be 21 days and it'll become in effect. Because that gives time for somebody to appeal. That's what I understand was going to happen, so. With that, now, Chris, are you online?
Yes, good evening.
Okay, thank, go ahead.
Uh, the only thing I've got to say about this, uh, this bylaw is the second batch that has come in from previous administration. They have been through two sets of planning commission hearings as, as with the last that we, that we passed. And, um, they've, I've given these forward up to the select board from a previous administration.
So that's, so do you have anything to say on any of these specifically, Chris? Or are you all set? As a, as a, as we went down, I listed them off. I, I hope you were online when I read them off.
I was, yeah.
Good.
No, I'm not looking specific to say about these specific bylaws, just that they've been through two reviews and the report is drafted by Sven.
So when you went through that period, and I'm, I'm assuming that it was several meetings, several planning board meetings, were there any comments that helped you guide the final language?
No, the language that, when I was in, was language that was already approved before the previous hearing. We need to redo the hearing because time has elapsed from the time that had the hearing due to the select board.
Okay. Let me, I don't want to cut you off, but you're all set for comments at this stage?
I am.
Okay, good. I, I know that there are planning board members here. Let me ask them, Howard and Paul and Mike. I would ask you, if you have any comments on these changes or the process or, or do you have any? If you have any, if you don't have any, then that's okay too.
For the largest part, they're housekeeping.
DeForest, Howard Beach, he's a planning board member? Okay, go ahead.
But as I say, for the largest part, these are just housekeeping. There were some minor changes in the bylaws which then affected the specific words in some of the definitions. None of these were major changes. A lot of them were assertions of references to state statute or whatever. We're trying our hardest not to restate a regulation that's also a statute, because then every time the statute changes or something, then you have to rewrite the regulations. So we're just trying to reference state regs wherever they're pertinent. And so there's a lot of insertion from that type of situation. A few things, you know, building height. We're trying to figure a way of addressing situations where you have a very steep lot and trying to avoid somebody interpreting the regulations to allow an exceptionally tall structure just based on the topography. So we went around and around on that. But most of it has just been housekeeping. Word changes, some things that were incorrect in the old definitions and correcting those. But that's basically it.
I did notice one here, and I don't know where. I think if we, if we go down through these lists that we have, and I'm, and I'm sure it was also available online as far as the packet goes. I'm thinking that, correct me if I'm wrong, but any changes were highlighted in yellow? Is that, or I see, but, but then I see, you know, junkyard and light industry, but then there is no other further yellow markings. Does, can anybody answer that, whether or not? I mean, the first yellow that I see is Title 49. I'm on page six, I think it is, where there's two or three sentences there that are in yellow, highlight. Does that signify a change?
Yes.
Let me scroll down here and I'll see one that I briefly looked at. Okay. On page 11, I know that you guys have worked hard and I know that we adopted some changes here a meeting or two ago, or maybe it's a little longer, I don't know. Dealing with, we're trying to allow small enterprise in buildings that already exist. I see, C is highlighted in yellow, that the maximum building area is 800 square feet. So that would, just by simple math, be 20 by 40. So my question is, what if the building was bigger than that, but the permittee said, "I'm not going to use any more than 800 square feet"?
That's possible. That, that actually happens.
No, but so, so how would that be addressed?
They can use, well, they, they can use up to 800 square feet for the small enterprise. The other area would have to be, they, they just can't use it.
No, I know. So that's what, that's one of the, even as I drove here, I'm looking around on the side of the roads and I'm saying, you know, there's, there seem to be some, some buildings that are around and I don't know everybody's intent. I, you know, depends on what people are doing. That would be bigger than that size that may, that may want to use. So you're saying that's allowed?
It, that is allowed. What you need to look at and consider in this is what is a, a small enterprise? What, what type of business is a small enterprise? And you're typically talking, talking some sort of retail type thing. So you, you'd have a marked space. More than likely, for instance, if you had a, let's say a 30 by 50 building, you'd, you'd have to enclose somehow your 800 square feet. That's what you would be allowed. And that would be part of your site plan permit and, and your function.
Could that be inserted here somewhere where, where?
Not sure that it needs to be. The limit is 800 square feet.
I know, but I'm talking about if, if somebody had a building that happened to be bigger than that, can that, can, can that be noted here as a friendly amendment? From this, from this body?
For what? What, what, what would you add?
I have no idea, well, supposed.
I, I will, I will give you an example. At, at my business, Hoxmount Motorcycles, I have a, a, a small store that's part of my permit. It's 320 square feet. That's 16 feet by 20 feet. That is actually in part of a 20 by 40 building. I'm only allowed to use, and when I did this, DeForest came over to inspect that I was only using 320 square feet. It, it, there's no, there's no, there's no, there's no language needed here, Dave, is, is what I'm getting at. It, this is handled through the, the administration. My particular permit is a conditional use. It says I can only use that space.
I think you're getting too involved because you have a personal thing. First thing that comes to my mind is it's, we're asking for these changes right here, right now. You're, you're already way in. You're years ago, yours is old.
I'm using it only as an example to address what your question is.
Yeah, but my, no, no, it's not, to me. Howard, go ahead.
One of the things that we're just trying to address here in the rationale for the 800 square feet is small enterprises are allowed in several of the residential zones. And, you know, by definition, if it's a residential zone, a business uses it to be subordinate and incidental to it. And that's where we came up with 800 square feet. Because you end up with something that's, you know, 3,000 square feet. It's hard to say that that's incidental and subordinate to a 2,000 square foot house.
But I, I went, I went down a different road. I didn't say a new structure.
Right.
I said one that was already pre-existent on the property. And I, I tried to fit it in backwards. So it had nothing to do with what Mike just brought up, because he filed for a whole new permit, all new thing, nothing. It had to do with what's already here in Weathersfield, tying it to the zoning bylaw changes that we just made a month or two ago, which allows small enterprise. Well, suppose there was a building that was 1,000 square feet. I'm not reading the language here where that would necessarily be allowed.
I think typically if, if it's an existing use and then you change the bylaw that reduces that size, you're grandfathered in. You know, if you've got 1,000 square feet that you're using and you've been using that for 15 years.
No, no, I'm talking about a brand-new, a brand-new enterprise that decided to use a building that they just bought in town. Or maybe they family-owned it, I don't know what, something. And they were trying to fit a small enterprise business of some kind within that structure. And they knew they had to fit it to 800 square feet, but the building itself was 1,000. But let's say it was 801, I don't know. And, and by, on the, on the measurements through the, the tax cards or whatever, that it was bigger than the 800 square feet. I'm only trying to make that with a bigger building that's already here. Not a brand-new structure, because that would be, that probably wouldn't be permitted. If somebody wanted to put, if you're in a residential zone and somebody said, "I have a new idea. I want to put a small engine business and I'm going to build a building 1,200 square feet." That's a no. Paul?
I'd like to hear what the land use administrator would want to say, because he would be the one making the decision, not the planning board members, based on, on, on the wording, to help answer your question.
Did you hear that, Chris?
I did, uh, sorry. I was kind of, I'm retiring by now, let everybody know. Uh, small enterprise is one of the definitions in this hearing for tonight. And I believe that was passed in the last one already.
I don't know.
Well, as far as, as far as enforcement of those for small enterprise, I would just say it's a technical occupancy. But I'd be willing to addition that into sort of occupancy in order to get it for the enterprise.
I don't want to be hard to get along with. I'm just trying to, if we, if we did, we adopted the language that allowed small enterprise to be fit into other buildings in town. Not brand-new ones, just trying to spur a little home business. That's fine. Some of those buildings may be under 800 square feet, and that's fine, because then they would fit right away. But what if they're not? That's all I'm trying to get to.
But, but just basically, they'll only be able to use the 800 square feet.
Within the building?
Right.
And that's when I asked five minutes ago, can that be put by a comma in, in the sentence in that? Or underneath that, it's a sub-line that says, "By this legislative body tonight," I'm not opposed to stand to letting these things happen. But it helps, and with all due respect, we've had different land use administrators here. They may interpret this differently. And I hope Chris stays for a long time, that's, that's okay. But, but if, even if I was in that position, I might read this to say, "The building is over 800 square feet and not allowed to do that."
That's why I asked that question.
The C states occupies a maximum building area of 800 square feet. It does not say that your maximum building size is 800 square feet. You're allowed 800 square feet of area. You're mixing a use with a building. They're two separate things.
Yeah, it is. And so I read this to be, I read this to stand just exactly what I've been trying to argue. All, that makes my argument stronger.
It shouldn't, because that's exactly the opposite.
Yeah, but you changed two words in there. You said the business and then you, then you put in the building. So the building is the building is the building, to me.
Occupies maximum building area of 800 square feet.
Yes.
That's what the business can do.
No, you added that word, it's not in here.
That's what we're talking about, small enterprise, it's a business.
Mike, you, I'm not going to recognize you. You're starting to get off on me and I don't, I'm not going to put up with it. I'm trying to make a point here about a bigger building with a smaller business in it. That's all. If the board doesn't, is not hearing me, they want to pass this long, go ahead.
But to clarify it all, to change the word "building area" to "square feet" or "square footage," I could buy a maximum square footage of 800 square feet. I mean, it's kind of redundant, but at least it would get away from the implication of the building.
I think it gives the land use administrator much more information to be able to support his objection or support. So if some neighbor said, "Hey, what are you doing? You got away with this inside a building," then they can refer to this by saying that really easy, rather than being subjective, whoever the land use administrator is. Any other comments about this?
I think Chris, if I may.
Yes.
I think Chris also made another point. If you go back to the notice of public hearing, section nine definitions does not include this section. It's not part of this hearing.
So, but, but this, page 11 is. It's specifying this square footage. So I don't see where that matters. So what you're saying is my words don't count. But they do.
What Chris pointed out was that this was already passed in the last one.
What? Oh, I'm sorry, DeForest has a question.
Go ahead, please.
Could I just ask a question? Are all the proposed changes that you're voting on tonight or you're hearing tonight indicated in the packet? I'm confused about what's being changed, because are, are just the definitions being changed? Because I don't see any citations for, um, sorry, let me go back up to the list. It just jumps to definitions. Is the hearing notice saying that the only changes that are taking place tonight are contained in the definitions and highlighted in yellow? Or is there language under section 3.2.4 Habitat Areas that say what it is now and what you're proposing to change it to contained in this packet? Because I'm not seeing it and I'm confused about what's being proposed to be changed tonight.
Uh, go ahead, Paul.
So I'll make a motion that we, that we keep the hearing open and we come back to this with documentation that better suits exactly what DeForest said. Because even myself, I'm having a little issue looking at some of this too.
Is there a, so I guess, so I'm following you. So sometimes what happens is on one side, or, or if there are any, if there are any changes, then you would see the high, the change into yellow. So you see what we've was and then what is, what is going to be.
I just see things highlighted in yellow. I don't know if those highlights are things that are being added or if there was language there before and this is what you're proposing. It's difficult for an outsider to follow. And I couldn't find anything on the planning commission site. I understand that the planning commission has met several times and probably talked about this at great length. But I don't see anything on their page posting proposed zoning bylaw changes. And I don't see a comprehensive packet in this packet explaining what those changes are. We, we adopted a lot of changes several months ago and it was the same situation. We had no idea. I was at that meeting and then got blindsided at a zoning board meeting because I didn't know that one of the very things we were supposed to be talking about that night had been changed drastically. So yes, I'd be the first to say the public has to make an effort to be informed. But if this is what's being proposed, it's, it's very cryptic and I don't understand why it's not more clear. What is in it now? What are you proposing? And why are those changes being proposed?
Did I hear you try, come on, go ahead, Chris. Did you, did I, did I hear you try to make a comment?
Yeah, okay. So ignore the things that are highlighted. The things that are highlighted are left over from the last hearing that we had from the select board. The things that we're talking about tonight for the changes are those listed on the notice, on the, on the hearing notice, as well as the, if you go past the pages of the definition or select board packet, you'll see the other languages that were supposed to be highlighted as well. So to go past all the definitions and go, you'll see the, like, compliance with federal law and renewable energy structures, all that other stuff. So it's, it's, you're just looking at the wrong pages in the packet, that's all.
I scrolled down though, I kept going to like 13, 14, 15 on the pages. So, oh, okay, so it's at the, it's almost at the very end.
But that's just a report, it's a summary. It doesn't itemize the actual ordinances that are being changed or proposed to change.
What is item F?
You don't have.
Yep, Mike.
Chris, you don't have them?
No, he said item F.
Oh.
He said, can you look at item F?
Excuse me.
I gotta say, no, I just misunderstood what you said.
Yep, yep. Paul, did you have a question?
Um, I was just going to say there was a motion on the floor. I don't know if you want to act on it or not.
I didn't receive a second.
I understand that, but he should ask for a second.
Yeah, so, um, so there was a motion made to continue the hearing. We'd have to have a date certain, either until the next meeting or, I don't know if you're comfortable with a, having one planning board meeting in the middle or not.
Well, I, so.
Did you have a date? There has to be a date on the continuation of the hearing.
Right, which I, I had mentioned, I didn't put specifically, but the next, our next select board meeting. I just, if, if we can get an explanation of exactly what changed to help like DeForest or others, then that's fine here. I made the motion just to help move some stuff along and we can.
And give you some time.
Well, it's not us time. It's, it's, it would be land use if they needed to do like what DeForest said, where he actually put, here's what it is, then here's what it changed. I know there's some stuff already written there and it is, like DeForest said, I know we live it, we hear it, we, we got it in our heads, but, um, you know, I, I don't know. It's, it's up to the board, because I mean, honestly, you guys were just talking about something we already passed.
So did, so the motion is, I want you to repeat the motion.
Well, I'm just making a motion to leave the hearing open and we continue the hearing until our next select board meeting, which I don't know the exact date, where we can have.
April 5th.
April 5th, David Ford's birthday. Where we can have a side-by-side comparison of what changed and what, what didn't. I, I agree with Howard that these changes are minor and should, for these, this group. The last group was a little bit different, but, and maybe that would help everybody and, and you can see exactly what's going on. But that's just my one recommendation. If the board wants to continue with this, they can.
So the motion been made in sec, no, 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 the motion been made that we continue the hearing open on the, on the changes in this hearing tonight for the 10 noted topics in the zoning bylaws. Is there a second to that motion? The motion been made and seconded now to move to continue the hearing on the proposed zoning bylaw changes, again noted in tonight's meeting on March 15th, move to April 5th. Is there any discussion? Brandon?
I, I do just want to say that for, for zoning bylaw updates to come before the select board, they first go through a pretty, a pretty in-depth review at the planning commission level, at which point a public hearing is warned and that public hearing takes place. By law, the planning commission and the zoning administrator are required to answer at a minimum four questions. And that would make up the planning commission's report. That report is included as attachment E. I'm going to answer this four pretty critical questions. So they did their job according to law. I would say that what DeForest is proposing would be very helpful to see what it is now, what's being proposed, and then why it's being proposed, all on one sheet of paper. But they did everything, we have everything that we, we need.
Legally, yes.
Legally, inside the packet, as it stands.
I'm getting that. And my concern was that when I read this and, and I did not go to the planning board, I viewed whatever concerns I had as to be easily passed by this board as a friendly, what was outlined to me in the very beginning of the meeting, where if the legislative body thought that a minor change could be made and it wasn't really, it wasn't really that dramatic, that it would be allowed. But I've since learned that maybe it's really dramatic. So there's a, there's a motion on the floor to leave this hearing open until April 5th. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, good. Thank you. The hearing is now continued until April 5th. Yes, Paul?
Just on this, if I may, this topic at least, for future, one of the things that'd be nice to see on, on the website, town website maybe, is, I know we post warnings on there, but it'd be nice to have like a warning page or a place here that people could go in and get any warnings that they want and have that information, whether that's a ZBA meeting, whether that's a planning commission meeting, whether that's our select board meeting. So all the warnings are, you know, they, it, it shows up here in the front page, but to have an actual back page that has all of it in there. And then the other thing is to have people be able to sign up for that. Because one of the problems that I, we're hearing obviously is people, "Well, I didn't know this changed." And for me, that's really hard to hear, even with some of the people that are actually involved in the town, to say that, "I didn't know this changed. I wasn't aware of this." I didn't, we post it, we, we put it here. So I want to figure out what we can do to better help, you know, if somebody that's involved with everything in the town already. you know, if somebody that's involved with everything in the town already is having issues of finding and understanding and knowing, then the residents are gonna have no, no chance. So we need to help that and I think that would help. And then also have that where people could sign up with either an email or the phone, just like, like now. If something changes on, on the Select Board section, you get a text. So if something happens in the warning section, they can get a text. So some, like DeForest could have that, Willis Wood.
Yeah.
Anybody could just say, well, I really want to pay attention to warnings. That's just a recommendation. I don't know if that's, that's good or not, but. DeForest?
I would happily watch or attend all of the Planning Commission meetings so that I would be better informed and ahead of the curve ball instead of feeling like I need to catch up. But I work on the same nights that they meet and I'm not sure what the option, what the alternative is, other than reading the minutes, which means the discussion has already taken place. So it is frustrating even when you attempt to be informed and I'm not sure how to, how to fix that.
Even the agendas, I mean, I, sometimes we don't learn of mistakes or decisions that we make here at this table because we talked about it three months ago, but the public, including me, I mean, there's sometimes, I don't remember when we talked about things and then we act on them. So it is hard to keep up with what, whatever the, I don't know whether the planning board or.
I'm more than happy to watch the agendas, but.
Goes through a, a series of what are we gonna do this year? I don't know that. And, and even us here at this table, even though we're gonna get to it tonight about trying to figure out what we're gonna do this year, sometimes that goes right out the window.
But I do think we need to do better at this for all of us, for everybody, so.
And I guess I'm just saying, I'm willing to do my part, it's just sometimes that part isn't enough and I'm not sure how to address that.
And that's where hopefully maybe if we did something here where we could tag in a, an email or, because i- if not, it's gonna be, like, we were talking about this the other day at the Planning Commission a little bit, but it's hard to, we send a blanket email out to everybody. I, I mean, it's hard to, maybe there's a couple of key people we need to inform, the other board members like we talked about, but then we get into, oh, we don't forget that as part of this procedure. So I think that place on the website and then having it tied in where you could actually put your email or your phone number in there, like, and if anything changes on that, boom, you get an email or a text. So then you can go look and see, hey, this has been warned. I better go, you know, look at this or watch. And maybe something too, like this, this meeting is recorded so you can watch this. I think the Zoom meetings for Planning Commission might be, they might be recorded Zoom-wise, so we might be able to offer those on there for people to see. Now granted, to your point, that might be after the fact of a hearing, but at least you could see before that we're planning on calling a hearing. So you would know and, and do that, so.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna move on.
Thank you, Chair.
Let's, um, let's go to, uh, comments from the board on anything not on the agenda. The board first. Any comments from the board, uh, comments, anything not on the agenda? Thank you, Howard.
Thank you, Howard.
I have one, I mean, I, um, I know the highway crew is very busy. Um, I know it's muddy and today it was really nice at eight degrees. So I'd ask that people give them a break a little bit on, on if they're feeling kind of frustrated, but the mud in the water is what it is. And, um, so they're doing the best they can and I know they're spending a lot of hours doing it. So it's mud season and it's gonna be the same by the end of this week too. Um, did you have any comments on something not on the agenda, Brandon? Are you all set?
I just, I just have one request to move the DSM presentation to item number six after the flag replacement vote. I think they're gonna be on the call at, um, 7:15-ish, so.
Is there anybody online or anybody from the public that has a comment, um, on something not on the agenda? Now, DeForest, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you to the Highway Department for restricting travel on, at least my road. It's made a big difference in how the road is holding up and not having all those extra cars on there every day. And I really, really appreciate it. Just want to say thank you.
I know they've done that on several roads and it has eliminated some. I've heard about it. I think you're doing on Wellwood, you tried to, I think maybe Golden Ridge. I'm, I'm not sure. There's a few.
Little scunty.
Yep.
Thrasher Road and Wellwoods. I'm trying to do it on the arteries that get used as a shortcut.
Yep.
Trying to keep the roads good for the residents that live there. A lot of people don't think to go around during mud season anymore and it really tears them up. So, thank you.
It's been super. I really appreciate it.
You just want to get rid of 50 cars a day. That's better.
It is very noticeable.
Is there any other comments on, on the, on the public? Is anybody online, any comments not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Uh, let's move to a review of the policies. Um, in your packet tonight, I, you know, I, we should, I should have, and I apologize for not having this in our last meeting on the 6th, but, um, I hope the board had a chance to look at some of these where conflict of interest, uh, and, and in a nutshell, what this does is if you feel, if you read this and you feel on any subject that we're taking up for the year, in any way, if you feel as though, um, that you can't make a decision, all we're asking you to do is to step aside on that particular vote. Uh, it goes into definitions here about financial, um, things. Uh, if you feel as though you may want to bid on something, you have something to do that you want to do with the town, you should step aside and, and, and also note that if we get into a discussion. Um, so I, I don't want to take a lot of time here and, and read all this, but generally speaking, at the beginning of any year, we go through some of these. And if you look at Article 8, it says recusal, where you, where you step down, um, for that particular issue and then you can come back. It does say things about Article 10 and enforcement, but, but at the end of the day, the people put us here and the people either like us and vote us back in or they vote us out up at here at this table. So that is really the only recourse. There isn't anything that, that, uh, that, uh, can get us out of being members of this board. Um, and then we get into ethics. Um, if everybody can take time or maybe if they did read that, um, we did a year or two ago, we did, uh, have town council explain to us about open meeting law. Uh, the three of us can't really gather at any place to talk about something to do with town business. That's viewed as a quorum and those, those kinds of meetings need to be warned and that's not a good thing. So it's best, and that also includes through email or, or any other kind of, uh, communication. And I would ask that if you want to do that, that you just ask me to put it on the agenda if you think it's strong enough to do. Um, the chair always reserves, regardless who it is, reserves the right to not put it on the, the meeting, in which case if you feel, uh, that, that you still want it on, you can bring it to the rest of the board members, uh, in the next warned meeting and ask that two others join you to put it on. So the board, uh, the, the chair doesn't have, you know, authority to override that move. So it all has to take place in open meetings where three members then would say that they want that particular item on the agenda to be talked about. And, and after that it would be, but I don't find myself being that hard to get along with. Um, all I try to do on any one of these meetings is measure the time that we spend and whatever it is that we're, we're into reviewing. Conduct of meetings and hearings, um, I expect everybody to behave themselves, including myself. And if somebody has an issue with what I do, I want somebody to say so. Um, and if you, if you can't make it, I hope that you will email either Brandon or call me or call him or whatever and say that you can't make a meeting. Um, the only danger would be is if two did and then the other three have to show up for a quorum. Um, so in order for us to keep our meetings, uh, we have to have a minimum of three. Um, are there any questions on these three things from the board? Okay, good. Let's move then to, uh, the flags. What's that, Brandon?
Oh, no.
Uh, let's move to the flags. On, um, I can't remember what day it is. Uh, I got a call from, uh, from Jeff Slade, uh, about, uh, the status of the flags that, uh, are put on the telephone poles here in the Village of Ascutney and Perkinsville. And he wrote a letter to us and I hope that either him and Lisa, uh, both of them are online. Um, and I don't know if you guys have gotten together with Brandon. I, I just read the letter for what it is and are you, are you on? Or Brandon, do you want to take this up or are the Slades online at all?
Yeah, uh, Lisa's on.
Okay. Are you there, Lisa? Are you, are you okay? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Do you wanna, do you wanna give us an update about what this is and then it'll be in the record?
Sure. So I'll, I'll just pretty much share the email that we sent stating that there's, um, American flags on 46 utility poles along Route 5 and 106. And before they're put back up in May, we're looking to replace all of the flags as well as all of the poles. The flags were last replaced in 2018, so they're showing somewhere. And a lot of the poles were up since the beginning in November of 2014. We've only replaced the poles that have really needed to be replaced and a lot of, a lot of them are bent and they need to be replaced this year. So, um, we're looking to, to do this, um, we would need to place an order at a cost of $845.27. And we do have $145 from donations from three different residents in town that have donated since the flags came down in November. So we're just, uh, looking for some funds from the Bottle Redemption Fund, um, to help support the purchase of some, some flags and poles.
Okay. Uh, Brandon, can you give us, I think we saw somewhere here, maybe if I scroll down a little bit, that was in the, in that bottle fund? I think it was, it's not in its packet for us, is it? It seems though there was, uh, maybe $2,300 in the bottle fund at the transfer station. And for the board's information, we've done this kind of thing before where we've given certain dollar amounts out of that fund. These are from the five cent bottles. I know, I believe the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts are both have gotten some funds before or, um, different, different other entities, not just this. Um, it's just a use of that money. Or maybe the board says now they just want to take it out of the general fund. I, I, can you clarify that, Brandon, about what the balance is in there? I thought I saw somewhere it was 23 something.
Yep, 230485.
Okay. What, what does the board want to, okay, Ray?
Just so you guys know, we're getting about between 50 and 80 dollars a week on average into that account from the transfer station.
So it keeps, it keeps.
Yeah, I keep, every week we bring cans back or every other week.
Okay, good. That's good to know. Um, what does the board want to do with this request? If you'd like to, I'd like to hear a motion to, uh, to grant $1,000 out of the bottle fund at the transfer station for flag replacements on Route 5 and Route 106. Don't move.
Second.
The motion been made and seconded to donate $1,000 from the bottle fund at the transfer station for flag replacement, uh, on Route 5 and Route 106. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I want to thank the Slades. They've done a really lot of work by doing this. I see them up on ladders and, and when they don't have to and, uh, replacing and working on them. So thank, thank you, Jeff and Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next up, Brandon, did you want to go now to, you wanted to go to DSM?
Yes, um, first, let's see if they're on the call. Ted, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, great. Um, can I share my screen? Okay, I need to. Do you want me to proceed?
Yep, go ahead. And I'll control the slideshow.
Okay. I want to go to the next slide. Uh, basically, we made an analysis of the Weatherfield budget and added capital costs but did not change Weatherfield operating budget, except to add actual West Windsor permit sales revenue and to examine the impact of adding a part-time employee. DSM believes that the FY 2021 budget is transparent and reasonable, but with a need for capital replacements. Next. As you're all well aware, uh, the solid waste disposal and recycling for residents of Weatherfield ready and West Windsor at the transfer station, you also accept construction and demolition waste and many special wastes. You open three days a week for 18 hours total. Next. You charge fees for trash, C and D disposal, bulky waste, appliance management and disposal, propane tank drop-off and tire drop-off, and there are no fees for, uh, single stream or zero sort recycling, glass recycling, scrap metal, electronics, motor oil, automotive and household batteries, cycling, fluorescent bulb recycling brush and food waste, which is a, and basically you are a full-service transfer station. Please.
Sorry.
Okay. So these, these are the fixed and the variable costs. Uh, we're calling them fixed in that most of them don't change very much year to year. Uh, and they represented 110,000 in FY 2020, 121,645 in, uh, are estimated to be the cost for FY 2021. Uh, the variable costs essentially are your costs for transfer and disposal of trash, transfer and disposal of C and D materials and bulky materials, uh, transfer and recycling of single stream material and, uh, some charges for other materials. Uh, so that, that represents another 170,000 plus or minus for FY 2021 for a total cost of roughly $292,000. Uh, and the fixed costs are primarily funded through, uh, permits or property taxes, revenue, and the variable costs are primarily funded through punch card fees. Next. We did, uh, meet with your Highway Department Foreman, Ray, and talk about, at the transfer station to talk about capital needs. Uh, we agree that there's a real need to replace the trash compactor that I think is about 30 years old. And that's a, a good time to rebuild the concrete pad under the trash compactor and container. And eventually you're going to have to re- replace the Bobcat skid steer within the next five to seven years. So we've carried that into the fixed costs, amortization of the cap, compactor and concrete pad, roughly 3% over 15 years and a capital reserve added for the Bobcat. We're not recommending a new trash roll-off as it should be part of the bid by the service provider. I know that your Casella, uh, trash collection or transfer and disposal bid is coming up for renewal, I think this coming year. Um, and there was some discussion about providing drinking water for the employees and for eye wash and hand washing. While we understand the need for that, the fact that the transfer station is located on an old landfill, uh, and the stuff that would probably require a significant amount of monitoring every year for, uh, contaminants in the water and a subsequent need for a heated space, but at a minimum, there is a need for bottled water for hand washing and for use as an emergency eye wash station. Next. Operational needs. Essentially, we agree that there is some need for a part-time third employee to assist on busy days and fill in when one of the two operatives are out sick or on vacation. Uh, it may not be necessary to have a third person onsite all of the operating hours, but certainly during busy parts of the day. And you might spend another 10 to 20,000 to budget, depending on how many hours added and the rate of pay. And we'll get into how you might pay for that later on in the presentation. to budget depending on how many hours added and the rate of pay. And we'll get into how you might pay for that later on in the presentation. Next. These are your revenues for, uh, FY twenty twenty, which are actual, and FY twenty twenty-one, which are projected. And as you can see, punch card make up the bulk of the revenue. There is some reason, uh, uh, revenue sharing associated with recycling. There currently is a reading assessment and a Weatherfield assessment. And, um, due to enforcement of the need for permits, the West Windsor permit sales have raised another seventeen thousand dollars this year compared to under four thousand next year. So the total revenues are essentially, uh, similar to what your costs are. Next. Obviously, one of the big issues, uh, that was, that was raised and resulted in this analysis was that, um, their, West Windsor was not paying its fair share for use of the facility. And so there was, you were looking at ways to make sure that West Windsor did pay its fair share. Obviously, permit sales have helped, but, uh, they're not sufficient. So we looked at a number of different ways to, um, allocate costs among the three towns. Next. If, if we had our others, we would, uh, use facility, facility users by town. But there are no real data on how many Weatherfield taxpayers actually use the facility. We assume that it's the majority, but we don't know that. And we know that you issue three hundred permits, uh, for Reading. And permits sold to West Windsor households during, since October of this past year, we sold two hundred and eighty-four as of January. And that is roughly, uh, two-thirds of the pop, the permanent households in West Windsor. Next. So, as far as revenue options go, in general, the state of Vermont requires some type of unit-based pricing. And Weatherfield essentially achieves this through punch cards for trash and C and D disposal. So you're in compliance with Act one forty-eight. Um, and it can be combined with property tax support, as is the case in Weatherfield and Reading. Or can be supported with permit fees, which is the West Windsor model. Note that for those households in the three towns who contract for collection service, the entire cost is borne by the household business, typically through a charge per month and by cart size and collection frequency. And as I'll tell you later on or present later on, the, the typical charge for every other week, collection of refuse and recycling in the three towns runs somewhere between forty and fifty dollars per month or four hundred and eighty to six hundred dollars per year. Next. We looked at population and housing data as, as ways to allocate, uh, the fixed costs. Uh, and also took a look at unoccupied housing units and seasonal and recreational occasional use, uh, housing so that we would have some idea of what the range might be if you didn't rely on parcel counts, which is one of the ways that you could allocate costs. Next. There is no particular right way to allocate costs. Um, historically, Weatherfield charged the permit costs on parcels because the intent was to not incorporate it into the property tax but treat it as a utility. And the only bill sent out by Weather, to, by Weatherfield was a property tax bill. And I can speak to that because I was a Weatherfield resident at the time that the transfer station was constructed and worked with the town manager at that time to try to figure out a way to make sure that the cost of the transfer station was not, uh, based on what your property tax bill was, but by the number of users. But the reality is that over time, it's essentially evolved into an add-on to the property tax. For many years, the town enforced a permit requirement where users placed their annual permit on their windshield each June when a new permit was issued. But eventually, uh, the, the town stopped enforcing that. And, uh, that, uh, essentially allowed West Windsor residents who were using the facility to do so without purchasing a new permit every year. And I suspect that it also you, allowed some users in Weatherfield and outside of Weatherfield, other than West Windsor, to use the facility as well, uh, without paying for it. When Reading closed their town dump, they were worried about illegal dumping and in turn used the property tax to purchase permits from Weatherfield. But West Windsor never added it to the property tax, but simply sold permits to those residents who wanted to use the facility. And as I said, uh, just before, over time, through lack of enforcement, many West Windsor residents simply stopped buying a permit each year. Next. As I, as I indicated, the Vermont law requires each facility to employ some type of unit-based pricing. And you're required to bundle recycling costs into the refuse disposal costs, which you do. And you're required to provide a separate food waste collection, uh, but you can charge for the service, although you're not. Ways to charge obviously include assessing each municipality and allowing those municipalities to place it on the tax rolls, which is the current model for Weatherfield and Reading. Uh, and a balance is paid by users through punch cards, which you're currently doing. Uh, it would be possible theoretically to charge the entire cost to all, to the users by adjusting the annual permit fee uh, so that the permit covered all of the fixed costs and the punch cards covered all the variable costs. Um, but one of the options and probably the one that is most viable for West Windsor is a hybrid option where the majority of the cost is paid for by the users through permit sales in West Windsor with the remainder on the property tax. And I'll walk through that again later on. Next. So the question is, what is a fair allocation of these fixed costs? Obviously, one way that's easy to figure out is, uh, the, based on the population of each town. The US Census provides, does a, uh, census every ten years, but it also updates uh, and estimates population every year. So we currently have twenty nineteen projections for all, uh, Vermont municipalities. It's also possible to base it on the household count in each town. Vermont Housing and Finance provides reasonably accurate data, either annually or every other year, for the number of households in each town, both the permanent households and the seasonal households. Um, but there are issues, especially in West Windsor, associated with the large number of timeshare units at the ski area, which contract for dumpster collection and disposal and don't use the facility. And finally, uh, what kind of stimulated this whole analysis was that, uh, Weatherfield was proposing to Reading and West Windsor using parcels as a way to allocate costs. Um, and although that is certainly possible, parcels don't generate trash, households and businesses do. And so of the three, it would probably be the, the one that we would least recommend, although it's certainly one option that you have. And we have calculated the allocation for all three of these options. Let's move on to the next slide. This is what the allocation would look like if you just simply took total population, uh, by town and took that hundred and twenty-one, six forty-five, which are the fixed costs and allocated it between, uh, among the population of the three towns. Next. For households, it's a little more difficult because there are different types of households, including permanent, seasonal and occasional use. The two that we focused on essentially were resident population only. You can see the allocation on the top, uh, figure and adding occupied and unoccupied households, including second homes, but not camps and seasonal units, which is an issue in Reading. And you can see how the allocation would change slightly, uh, between those two alternatives. Next. Then we look at the parcel counts because that's what, uh, Weatherfield had, had been using in Weatherfield. And the, the problem we found with parcel counts obviously is that there are all sorts of ways to count parcels. And in this case, we looked at three different allocations, one being total parcel count, one being taxable parcel counts and one being parcels that have a dwelling on them. And, uh, even in these cases, there are some judgment calls. I basically had to go through the West Windsor Town Report and the Lister's, uh, uh, report in order to estimate the number of dwellings on parcels. And I know that that's somewhat of a problem for Reading because of a large amount of seasonal camps and parcels in and around the Coolidge State Forests. But we did do an allocation based on that. Uh, next. And again, you can kind of see, based on the allocation, based on total parcels, taxable parcels and dwellings, it's not that significant a difference between the two, but each one is slightly different allocation between the, among the three towns. Next. So essentially, I think that the key issue that Weatherfield, together with West Windsor and Reading, needs to figure out is which one of those allocation methodologies is the fairest. Uh, and then establish that allocation and establish your annual fixed costs based on your budget. And then each town, uh, being required to pay their allocated share annually to Weatherfield. Um, and if you have unforeseen costs or running a deficit, uh, you would build it in to the following year's allocation. And since the Weatherfield budget is on a fiscal year, the assessment would be due probably at the beginning of their, of your new fiscal year, July or August. Next. So one of the things that we looked at is how would each of the towns pay their allocation? Right, and essentially, it would not be difficult for each of those towns to simply, Reading and West Windsor, to simply budget the full allocated amount and pay Weatherfield at whatever time you thought appropriate, probably in the middle of summer. And that is essentially what Weatherfield and Reading assess each household and, uh, pay for it that way. And West Windsor pays for at least a portion of costs through the sale of permits. Uh, assuming that roughly a third of the households, and, and this is wrong, it's, when I first wrote this slide, about forty-five percent of West Windsor households contract for roadside collection. Now it's down to about thirty-three percent based on more recent permit sales. Probably the most likely to succeed in West Windsor would be to charge West Windsor their fair allocation, have West Windsor incorporate that in their annual budget and then allow West Windsor to sell permits, uh, at whatever rate they chose to sell permits for residents in the town and use that to offset part of the, uh, amount in the town budget with the, the rest being raised through property tax revenue. So essentially, West Windsor would pay Weatherfield and then raise revenue during the course of the year, uh, through the permit sales to offset part of the costs in the general budget. Next. As I said earlier, I'm gonna swing back to this in a few minutes. There really are a couple alternatives to using the transfer station. And both, both of them are relatively expensive. One is subscription roadside or curbside collection. As I said, roughly four hundred and eighty to six hundred dollars a year. And that does not include bulky waste, C and D waste, special waste. So if you're a household that contracts with Casella or Alba Waste or Joe's or anyone else to collect your refuse and recycling, uh, you're gonna pay extra to, uh, have them collect other materials. Or you're gonna buy a permit and bring it to the Weatherfield Transfer Station anyway. There is another, uh, transfer station in, uh, Springfield, basically right at the Charlestown Bridge. They have a minimum thirty-five dollar per, per visit, a charge. Uh, and so if you were to go there, you're gonna pay thirty-five dollars plus this, uh, cost per bag or for the material you're, you're disposing there. And if you were to compare what you're currently spending on the transfer station for punch cards, uh, and in the case of West Windsor permits, you're really only paying about a hundred and twenty to two hundred dollars a year, depending on the household count and, and how many times you purchase punch cards. Uh, obviously, people don't, but they should incorporate what it costs them to drive their private vehicle to the transfer station. Um, and if you were to add that, you might double that cost uh, in terms of the IRS mileage rate. But the reality is you'd still be under the cost that you would pay if you were paying for a subscription roadside collection. Next. There are also two embedded costs, which you don't really see, but you're paying for through your Casella, um, disposal charge. One is a six dollar per ton disposal fee, which goes to the state of Vermont for solid waste management programs. The other is a nine dollar per ton disposal fee, which is assessed at, for every ton, uh, that is disposed of out of the Windsor-Widom County Solid Waste District and provides solid waste planning and services to member towns, uh, which was, their budget was roughly a hundred and eighty thousand this last year. And we estimate that the three towns contribute roughly twenty thousand to this district budget. So essentially, at the transfer station, Casella must charge an additional fifteen dollars per ton to the town and then remit fees to the state and the district. Next. There are some related fee issues, and I know that Brandon, uh, grappled with this, fairly recently, which was a second permit for same households, nominal fee or no fee. Uh, there's been some requests of a recycling-only permit. Um, but we don't think that that's a, a good idea. Essentially, there are a number of, of private dwellings in West Windsor that have dumpster service and the haulers are supposed to be providing recycling at no charge, but they're not. And so those households are using your recycling facility, um, but they shouldn't be. Um, and since recycling is relatively expensive these days, we don't, uh, recommend that as a, uh, as a, a permanent practice. The other issue is whether you want to have some type of a single-day use permit or fee. But our assumption is that, given how stretched, uh, the people that are working at the transfer station are now, that, uh, figuring out a way to charge for a single-use permit uh, doesn't seem all that reasonable. Um, instead, I think that most people who need to use a transfer station, certainly West Windsor residents, probably Reading residents, given a choice, would buy the permit, uh, if they, even if they were only, only gonna use it for, say, bulky waste or C and D once in a while. Next. We do think that, uh, and I noticed that Brandon sent me, uh, a spreadsheet saying that you're running a small deficit at the moment for the FY twenty twenty-one, uh, fiscal year. We believe that you could relatively easily, and I know that's always hard because the select board get the, the complaints, but, um, a four-dollar punch card would raise another twenty-two thousand and could pay for needed third employee as well as some capital improvements. And that four dollars is very much in line with the cost of other transfer stations and would still be a relatively good deal compared to contracting with a private hauler. We also recommend that you charge for food waste disposal. Um, we, for the, uh, Agency Natural Resources, did a comprehensive, statistically valid survey for the state in, uh, twenty eighteen, looking at uh, how many people in, in Vermont, how many households in Vermont were composting or feeding, uh, food scraps to animals. And it's, it's over fifty percent. And so our feeling is that there's plenty of opportunity for most households in, uh, whether, the three towns to have their own composting facility if they want to, backyard composting facility. Um, and that those who don't should pay for separate, uh, disposal. Especially given that where your food waste is going now is that it's, it's essentially uh, being picked up at the transfer station, hauled to a transfer state, another transfer station, I, I believe, uh, somewhere in the, in the district. And then it's being hauled one way, two hundred and seventy miles to Exeter, Maine, to a, uh, anaerobic digester. So there's a, a lot of costs associated with separate food waste collection disposal, uh, which you're currently providing at no cost. Next. Um, Ray asked us to look into the relationship that you have with the Northeast Resource Recovery Association. Weatherfield currently pays seven cents per capita to NRA for annual dues. And as you can see, it's a a, a really small amount, roughly a hundred and thirty-nine dollars per year. You should be paying based on the total population using the transfer station, which would increase that cost to around three hundred and twelve dollars per year. But this is a relatively small amount to pay. And essentially, they provide cooperative marketing arrangements for materials that um, you are marketing now such as scrap metal and glass. And you're not required to use them. If you can find a better deal, you can, but in many cases uh, because they represent a very large consortium of municipalities in New Hampshire and Vermont, they are the better deal. We are a little bit more concerned about the Southern Windsor Solid Waste Management District. Um, it is not clear that the district is providing sufficient value. And I I think that our basic recommendation is that all three towns need to pay closer attention to just what the district is doing and uh, what the benefits are associated with that solid waste district. Uh, next. And that that really represents my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we have any questions? That was that was a lot of information. Um, I I don't know if I don't know if we're gonna come up with any answers, but uh.
I did give you a detail now at our letter report, which you can take home and read. So you I I'm not asking for any uh, decisions tonight. I think that this is really something that you along with Weathers uh, West Windsor and Reading have to work out in terms of the allocation yourself. But in general, uh, as we've said all along, the transfer station is a a really good asset for the three towns. And I think that there's a desire for the Reading and West Windsor to pay pay their fair share of the uh, fixed costs of the operation.
Um, I I know that in the past that there's been a there's been a uh, a survey, kind of a questionnaire and and it was number one that that the residents do want a place like this to to be able to access whatever they've got, either recyclables or trash or something. Um, so that's number one, point one. Um, point two, obviously, the board would go, I think, would be wrestling really hard to be raising rates. Um, did did you guys look or perhaps maybe you can look at though? If, is it just automatically assumed that we just need to get another compactor or anything or or would it be true that the facility may be looked at as far as the uh, um, the site itself that could be rearranged perhaps, or and maybe I'm just all out in left field where we would be having less labor, not more. Um, I know, for instance, that we just came up with some new tickets that that gave us a little bit of a headache in the past, but but now have kind of corrected themselves. Um, so I'm wondering out loud whether or not that more like a drive-through or whatever where we have less labor or some other, some other means would be looked at. And I I don't know where they are, other than to tour a bunch of others that are located in Vermont to see, or even New Hampshire. To see what everybody else is doing, to see if we could get a good idea, cuz I'm not sure that we do and I'm not sure that we don't. Ray, go ahead. Go ahead Ted. Go ahead.
We we do a lot of our fellow uh, New England in have done uh, uh, studies at other transfer stations in Maine and New Hampshire, Vermont and down in Massachusetts. And I think you would have a difficult time reducing the amount of labor that you have there. I think that you, if you if you're reticent to raise the the punch card fee, there the other option, and you're starting to get better at it, is to make sure that you're sufficiently charging, especially for C and D and bulky waste, because you're basically have an operator who's estimating uh, how how much waste is in the back of that pickup truck. And then saying, well, that's gonna be two punches or four punches. In some cases, it's easy because you have a set rate for a mat- uh, mattress or a tire. But for many of the materials that are being brought in there, he's kind of estimating, and I think he does a good job. Um, my company does uh, volume estimates for C and D facilities uh, throughout uh, the Northeast. We've done a tremendous amount of work in Rhode Island and Delaware on this issue. And I could tell you, it's really hard to uh, estimate what uh, something weighs based on the volume that you see. Um, so I I don't think you could eliminate the uh, second employee that you have down at the single stream recycling facility. I'm also worried that um, there should be more enforcement of materials that are going into that into the that compactor than there is already. I I see too many people throwing plastic bags in there and materials that uh, shouldn't be going in there. And we are confronting all over the country with a contamination issues with recycling. So that that position seems fairly important to me. And obviously, the person up at the trash compactor is dealing with uh, the glass issue, electronics, um, the trash estimating how much trash there is. One of the things I I've noticed is that when we first established the fee, uh, it was supposed to be for a thirty-two gallon garbage bag and people have gotten used to bringing in larger contractor bags and still paying the same one punch when they should really be paying two punches. So if if you're worried about raising the punch card fee, I don't think you're gonna find that you could get by with a single individual there, especially given that there's two separate locations um, for everything. And I think that more importantly, if if you don't want to have another person there, uh, being careful to make sure that they are charging the correct amount for trash and C and D is probably more important.
Ted, and we did do a correction and probably it's, I'm not sure whether it's six months, we we kind of stopped the contractors from coming in with C and D. And we just said, okay, um, that we would allow um, households, you know, like a pickup truck. But but maybe you just raised a good point because I thought I saw somewhere in here I and maybe I'm gonna miss it. But but there was an amount that's scheduled for C and D. And maybe with the information that you just shared with us, maybe we shouldn't allow it at all. And maybe we should refer it down to the Springfield site because quite frankly, for a one-time fee for thirty unless and and uh, Matt Crisley would have to waive this, which I'm sure he might be agreeable to, but you know, for a one-time fee of thirty-five dollars and then it goes by weight, maybe that's maybe that's part of the answer for the town of Weathersfield, just to get out of C and D. And and then make that uh, much more better for the uh, for the attendance and get the weight thing out of it and that cost. I I thought I saw somewhere where maybe I missed it, but I thought it was fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars just for C and D costs. And I know that's recovered by punch tickets, but but it's a wash. I mean, I go ahead, Ray.
I I I I agree that's worth looking at. Um, a lot of the time that Tyler has when it gets really busy is when they have a harder time keeping track of punches, just people like to try to negotiate. Their truck isn't way that much and this is smaller than that. They don't have time for that. So he's running around trying to keep people from throwing glass in the compactor and punching properly. And plus, we go up twice a week to compact the C and D. So the highway department goes up there twice a week to keep that container comp- compact, to keep it from
So there's more cost than we think, at least in that, to that one topic.
Correct.
Yes.
So that the committee, I don't wanna out be outspoken here, but the committee is formed trying to find the most cost-effective and fairest way for all towns to pay the same amount. And I think going forward, Brandon and I have talked, Brandon and I have talked about it. It's a really good plan to have all three towns involved and people that can focus on how to save money and how to improve this facility. But now we don't have that.
Is that what's setting up though, Paul and and Brandon, the 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 what that you have representatives from all three towns, right? And you have been meeting to go over things.
Yes.
I think it's been enlightening to Reading and West Windsor about, I don't think they wanna open a new facility on their towns. I think they wanna work together and I certainly wanna work with them. I'm I'm sure everybody does.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
But if we could circle back to what I said, do do we, has anybody looked at a broad thing about, okay, when you drive the cars in there and and it goes where they go? Is it really, you know, and I got stuck in this for farming for forty years. I mean, just cuz you trudge out to the barn and you say, God, this is, I gotta go, you know, make the donuts. Some some days you wake up and you say, well, there's a better way to make donuts. I know, I so so maybe there is with this too and
The the biggest issue would be the state keeps adding more obstacles like the the compost. So only certain things can go in the compost container. So you have to monitor that. The glass, if we start contaminating the glass, we're gonna lose our site to dump it at. So corks and jar lids, all that stuff. So we have to put it in a container. He has to hand sort it and then put it into the big container. No matter what you do for signage, no matter how many times you show people, they just, they're
They don't do it. Paul.
Uh, two two quick things, just back to your C and D question.
Yep.
Um, we have their slide up on the on the board, so it looks like approved budget for fiscal year twenty uh, twenty-one.
Yep.
Um, it looks like you're at fifty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars for C and D.
That's a lot of money.
It is.
So so you'd mentioned eighteen thousand. I just wanted to say that, no, this is, it it's a much bigger deal that that the C and D stuff and
And last year's surplus, uh, last year's deficit was attributed to ninety percent C and D.
Okay, but 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 won't that, but but you, there's some punch tickets there. So you're gonna lose the, not only would you shrink the cost, you would shrink the revenue.
But you'd also shrink the costs, so the revenue, you're not, half the time you're not charging enough to to match that.
Okay.
You're barely covering it.
Okay.
So, and and my my uh, my second point that I was gonna make is you'd asked if we thought about other stuff. Uh, first and foremost, the first thing that this group was trying to do is to look at a fair and equitable way for the three towns to pay the costs that are already there. We 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 weren't we're trying not to get into, well, this would be better, this would be better. We're just, as of right now, how do the towns get charged? And then we we hired out to uh, you know, DSM here to help us with um, maybe some understanding and and you know, a a neutral um, way of looking at things. So um, once we kind of get to that point of how I think the towns are going to share um, equitably and fairly, then we can start looking at together uh, how how we think that that it works and and that would definitely not just be our group. I mean, Ray's there and part of this too. So it's definitely gonna be, you know, in in conjunction with the people that work there and what they want, um, and how they feel. So based on that.
I think if we're gonna think about C and D, that we better give that a long lead time.
Yeah.
So if we're thinking about losing C and D in three or four months, not tomorrow, and not, we can't shut the door like the that we had that happen before on something like the second sticker. We don't wanna, we don't wanna make shock on people. So if we're thinking about doing that, we need to give them like four to six months lead time.
So I just, I just got a price personally, personally for a a fifteen yard C and D dumpster.
Yep.
It was three hundred and forty-nine dollars for a seven-day rental, just as a FYI. Now, for a project at home, okay, it to me is gonna save a lot of time instead of me having to run back and forth to dump and whatever, but it's doable, it's reasonable, and they come in, they drop it and it goes. And and that's just one estimate from one person, uh, you know, so.
Yep.
One thing I can just suggest is that you might ease out of the C and D business or certainly reduce it by really ramping up the number of punches required to dispose of it there, so that it does drive people down to the Springfield transfer station and to contracting with someone to bring in a dumpster. I think you've made a really good choice by not allowing contractors to use it. And I think that if you increase the uh, number of punches required for C and D uh, so that it's more costly and is more representative of what it's really costing you to get rid of it, then you'll discourage additional use. Um, and that might not be a bad idea.
So what I was getting at with the committee is we're really informal right now. And I have talked to Brandon and he, I don't know if he wants to chime in or not, but the thought was to get this to be more formal. So if you have a question like, look at C and D, the committee can look at that and look at all the options and really spend a lot of time on it. I find it hard to run the highway plus the transfer and spend a lot of time. That transfer needs somebody that has more ideas. I like, I I try, I'm I'm doing my best, but I think to to really make it a value, having a committee with a lot of brains thinking about it is the best way to go. So that that's hopefully where we can go.
You don't want me on it, though.
Well, and it includes the other towns. I think this is the first, this between last year or whatever, they've been asked to the table. Yes, but they but but we wanna do that. We don't want to be, although we do own the facility, so there's some there is some sense of obligation to Weathersfield with regard to hard stuff like electricity and the buildings and the compactor and everything. Um, but but I uh, so have the fees yet been set this year or no? Do we do that in June when we set the tax rate?
Yep.
So there's still some things to work out or to to find out. So I was curious to know that you still say that it's running a little bit in a deficit, uh, Brandon?
Uh, I'll get into that in my finance report.
All right. Is there any other questions for Ted or or on this? Yes, Mike.
Um, I had, I had a couple. And I I didn't know if the first one uh, may have been a bit of misunderstanding on my part. Um, it had to do with uh, setting the permit fee in other towns. And it sounded like you said that we would let, you suggested maybe letting other towns set their own permit fee. Why would we do that and how would that work?
Well, if you uh, let let's say that you decided that West Windsor share of the fixed cost was thirty thousand dollars for discussion purposes. Then essentially, you would provide West Windsor with the stickers which would go on the windshield. No one from West Windsor would be able to use the transfer station unless they had a current sticker. And I assume that that would be enforced beginning uh, in July or June. And then the thought was under the hybrid model is that West Windsor could charge uh, eighty dollars a permit or seventy-five dollars a permit or fifty dollars a permit and make up the difference in their property tax. They would owe you the entire amount. So they would owe you thirty thousand. They would pay the thirty thousand. But then it would be up to West Windsor to decide to charge how however mu- much they wanted for their residents and their residents only to buy the permit. And Reading could decide uh, to continue to just pay it through the property tax, or they could charge a permit fee. Um, you currently uh, essentially have a standard fee that you send out on your property tax bill for each permit. Um, you could change that as well, but the the goal would be to allow each town up the flexibility to figure out how to pay their allocation. And it really wouldn't matter to We- to Weathersfield what charge West Windsor charged for permit, as long as they pay the thirty thousand dollars that they owe you. And so that
That's what the hybrid model essentially would become.
That that makes, I I still got
I have a question, Ted. This is Brandon. Um, so say, you know, our assessment's seventy-five thousand dollars in the town of Weathersfield. And and we tax based on that seventy-five thousand dollars. So we charge the residents seventy-five thousand dollars. And then we turn around, i- if I'm understanding you correctly, we turn around and we charge a permit fee on top of that seventy-five thousand dollars. And money accumulates in permit sticker fees. Where does that go from there? How do you how do you reimburse the residents as a whole?
Also, in the case of Weathersfield now, let let's say you're at at seventy-five thousand, essentially uh, if you wanted to, you could uh, reduce the amount that you carry on your property tax from seventy-five thousand down to say half of that. And then you could charge each resident uh, for the permit sticker. Um, rather than essentially providing each household with a sticker for a flat fee. And so you could, you could change the amount that you charge for the permit. And essentially what you're doing is you're making it more and more of a user fee and taking less and less of it off of the property tax. And that's what West Windsor is talking about is that um, even though they're gonna pay their share, their fair share to the town of let's, I'm using thirty thousand as a placeholder. Um, they may end up charging the residents of the that use that facility roughly twenty thousand of that or twenty-five thousand of that in permit sales. And then the remainder is made up through property tax revenue. So it allows essentially each one of the three towns a way to uh, increase the user fee component and reduce the amount that's charged on the property tax.
In the case that the permit sticker fees exceed the allocation that was given to the town of Weathersfield, what happens with those proceeds?
I I don't, I, no one contemplated that as an alternative, Brandon. I think that um, and in fact, I think that what that might be prohibited under any kind of a joint agreement among the three towns would be that you wouldn't be charged you wouldn't be charging more than the town's allocation for the fixed costs because you already have the punch card fee in addition to it. So we all are really contemplating that as an alternative, but they were contemplating using this permit or the sticker charge to reduce the amount that is raised through property taxes.
You had more questions, Mike?
I did, two. Uh, uh, this is information, I think, food wa, food waste costs. Where are we seeing this fee here in, in Weathersfield? Holler fees, handler fees, et cetera? Where, where is that showing up for us?
We, we pay twenty-four dollars per tote, per week, and we have six totes a week going out. Comes out to seventy-eight hundred dollars a year. That started July of last year.
We need pigs.
Sell those. Sell those.
Pork chops.
Comes out to seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars a year.
Thank you. And, and my last one is, do you think that adding a scale would be a reasonable investment? Would it provide any significant benefit in accuracy of our charge volume versus our haul, haul volume? That goes to whoever can.
It would, it would give you a.
We have to ask that on a number of occasions. And you're not really, the throughput through your facility is low enough that I think that you would find that the capital costs and the operational costs associated with the scale would probably not be worth it. We have, you're not the only town or transfer station that's asked us to look into that. And typically, a scale that is accurate, and remember that it has to be, comply with the state's scale weights and measurements, which means it has to be highly accurate. And it would have to be large enough so that it could handle a pickup truck plus a trailer. So you're looking at several hundred thousand dollars in the cost of the scale. You're looking at annual maintenance costs. We found that in-ground scales, especially in colder climates with water pooling up underneath freezing temperatures, they tend to get out of whack once in a while, so you have repairs. So I, I think that, while I understand where you're coming from, probably you wouldn't, if you were to do a cost-benefit analysis and look at what it costs to construct and operate the scale, it probably wouldn't be worth it in your case.
Thank you.
And also, on your, your thought of C and D, some towns have a monthly, a vendor will come in, like a seller, whoever, set up a container, and they will manage that. And then they'll charge them directly so residents can get rid of couches and big bulky items once a month or every, once every two months. A lot of towns, that's how they address that. But, you know, you have a facility right in Springfield that does the same thing, so.
Yes. Any other questions? We've gone, Joey.
I just think it'd be a helpful piece of data to have if we could somehow figure out what percentage of users of the facility are actually from Weathersfield versus other towns, so we know where our people are and can base who's paying what accordingly off who's actually using the place.
Or who has, like, there, there are a significant number that have curbside here.
Yeah.
In this town. I, I don't know what the percentage would be, but I'd be willing to say that twenty or thirty percent do.
Right, so it'd be nice to know, maybe.
Yeah.
That could be all stuff the committee could work on going forward.
We would, we would.
Go ahead, Ted.
We would agree with that. It would be really helpful for Weathersfield to know how many Weathersfield users are using it. We, when we've done the statewide analysis, we've always assumed that some percentage of Weathersfield residents had curbside. Of course, some of those use curbside, but then go to the transfer station for bulky and other materials. But that would be very useful information to know.
Went down the red street, she didn't work, household had them, then you'd have that accurate candidate.
Or people might just volunteer. I mean, I don't think that that would be that hard to figure out. I mean, I, but you'd be surprised. I mean, all down my road even, there's a lot of curbside. It's, it's not, it's not just generic. I mean, that's right next to the transfer station, kind of a mile or two, and, but they're there, they don't bother. Any other questions for Ted or for anybody else here for tonight? We've already gone for quite a while, yes.
The, the guys that are over, over at the transfer station work, I mean, yeah, they got, they got a lot going on that they're, they gotta keep up with. But how, how, how well are they keeping up with identifying stickers on windshields?
That's where we had a discussion, I've had a discussion, well, with three different managers now. If that third person was there, it probably would, their, their wages would almost be covered by making sure people have window decals, making sure the right amount's being charged and things are going where they're supposed to go. It would be a benefit to have them. But it's hard for these guys when you have cars all the way out to the gate to be looking at every single window and, and make sure they have a window decal. A lot of people come in and they'll go double or triple wide, and he's having a hard enough time keeping up with the punches. Never mind people throwing glass in the wrong place and everything else. So that's where we were thinking on a really busy time to get that third person to alleviate that. They are doing the best they can.
Yes.
No, no, I, I get that. I'm thinking in a different direction. I'm just, I'm thinking if you got rid of C and D at fifty-five thousand dollars, you're taking an awful lot off of labor. And despite what is said here about, there is a lot of controversy in negotiation on punches. And anytime you take that out of the human decision-making, particularly for guys that work on Wednesday and Saturday and Sunday when other people don't have to, that's a good thing. You're taking it right out of their hands. And I think we should be pursuing that myself. I think in that case, less is more. Go ahead.
If the town defines what they want to provide for service.
Yes.
Right now, we're basing everything on what we're providing right now and what the state mandates.
Or we don't. Or we just say that the town is no longer in the C and D business.
Right, and that's.
And I think you gave a perfect example. I mean, so that means like, once a year maybe, if somebody wants to clean up whatever they got around there, they're gonna spend three hundred dollars, and they don't have to go over to the transfer station. They don't have to worry about threatening people with tickets or punches or whatever. Or they even get a smaller drop-off, a roll-off.
Right.
I don't think that was the smallest one you could get.
No, no, that was, that was a fifteen-yard.
Yeah, that's, okay, so that's a, that's a wheeler. Yeah. Any other questions for tonight for the transfer station? Thank you, Ted.
Thanks, Ted.
We're gonna move on.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we got to review minutes of Thursday, March fourth. Need a motion to pass the minutes, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve the minutes of Thursday, March fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Is there any discussion? All those on the table say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our, our minutes say three, five, Brandon, so they gotta move to, to March fourth, isn't that correct? Yes. Let's go to the February two, twenty twenty-one finance report.
Good afternoon. Everybody has a packet of paper that we printed off for you. And this is the finance report from July one of twenty twenty until February twenty eighth. As of February twenty-eighth, our general fund revenues are at sixty-eight percent, which means we've collected one million thirty, one million thirty-three thousand dollars as of February twenty-eighth. Administration revenues are at eighty percent or two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Library revenues are at zero percent. Town clerk revenues are at ninety-three percent. So they're, they're pretty far along. There's still four months remaining. We anticipate revenues to go over, potentially up to fifteen to twenty percent, what was budgeted. Listers revenues are at zero percent. And again, their revenues generally come in in April and May. Land use revenues are at eighty-eight percent. Police department revenues are, are low at twenty-five percent. And that's because the police cruiser has not been purchased yet. So we haven't received that invoice and paid it. So when we do, you'll see it jump from twenty-five to eighty-five, ninety percent because those revenues are coming in from reserves. And fire service revenues are at zero percent. That zero percent, it seems very low, but the only revenue that the fire departments generate based on the budget that was approved last year is their insurance revenues. So the fire departments pay to the town their insurance, and it shows as a revenue. It's about twelve hundred dollars, and then, and then we pay the insurance. Moving into FY twenty-two, that's no longer gonna be the case because we're gonna pay all the bills. So you won't see any revenue unless they receive grants or hazmat money or any other kind of revenue. We, we don't have any bank in the budget for that. General fund expenses are at sixty percent. So in comparison to revenues at sixty-eight percent, you can see that we're about eight percent in the green or six hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Administration expenses are at seventy-one percent. Library expenses are at fifty-eight percent. Finance expenses are at fifty-two percent. Town and clerk expenses are at fifty-seven percent. And listers expenses are pretty high at eighty-two percent.
Why is that?
That's due to the, there was a couple of things that were unbudgeted last year, such as software purchases that the listers moved forward with to purchase those software because if we don't purchase the software, then it lapses for a year.
How much are you talking about? Is that, is, so all I'm saying is, any one of these, any, and I'm not gonna pick on them.
Yep.
Any one of these departments that, that, so you're, you have whatever it is that was budgeted for the year. So some of them are gonna be controlled somehow to come in about what they were for the budget.
Correct.
Okay, so everybody needs to know that. So I don't want that dropped on them at the last minute. So I think you probably should notify all the departments saying, you're at this much and you only have whatever else is left.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We have monthly finance meetings with all departments.
Okay.
And each department receives a written report. Additionally, each department receives their actual budget document on a monthly basis. So these are things that have been noted and will be discussed with each department this month. The select board hears it first, and then we go to the departments around February, around the seventeenth.
Because the general fund is very specific with regard to law when you run a deficit. You will, like, I don't, I don't have the law in front of me, but I've seen it before when Larry and Marlene was here. I mean, you really have to, well, we got caught and we had to put it on the tax bill, and everybody was up in arms about that. So it's pretty specific about it. Surpluses are fine, but deficits are a whole horse of a different color, so.
Yep.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but you just, it's, when that number is so high, I just, I wanted to ask why.
Yep, and, and it's exactly that. So tuition and training went over a little bit. And then there is, there is those software purchases that were made. And we'll discuss that with them and we'll figure out a way to absorb it. Land use expenses are at sixty-six percent, so those are right on track. Police department expenses are at fifty-two percent. Again, that will increase once we purchase the new police cruiser. And fire service expenses are at fifty percent. Does anybody have any questions on general fund revenues or expenses? Great. Moving on to the highway fund. Highway fund revenues are currently at seventy percent. So that means we've collected about seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars as of February twenty-eighth. You can see the middle chart, and that shows all revenues that we've collected. Stadia to highway came in about six percent more than projected. So that was, that's a variance of seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. So we collected seven thousand, nine hundred more than we projected for stadia to highway. Permit revenue is at fifty-four percent. Service to other departments is at eight percent, and that's really just an internal bookkeeping thing that we'll be charging various departments for highway service probably in the next couple of months, and then you'll see those bookings take place. As discussed last month, we were moving the fund balance to reserve so that, that transfer has taken place. So the hundred and twenty thousand that the select board voted to move into reserves has been put into reserves.